Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this special meeting of our city's Planning Commission, Thursday, May 18th, 2016, in Brisbane City Hall, 50 Park Place, Brisbane. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Minier?
Here.
Commissioner Parker?
Here.
Commissioner Reinhardt?
Here.
The records show Commissioner Doe is absent.
And we wish her a speedy recovery. Okay, tonight's agenda, all right, may we have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda, please?
I motion to adopt the agenda of Wednesday, May 18th, 2016.
All in favor?
I'll second.
All right.
Me, second.
Thank you. So, consent.
Now we have to do all in favor.
All in favor, well, I did it simultaneously. Aye. Kind of be efficient as possible. Consent calendar, so we'll be adopting the planning department's recommendation on the draft action minutes from our prior meeting of April 14th, unless someone from the public commission or its staff asks to remove an item to discuss it. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Nope.
Anyone? No? Great. Can we have a motion to adopt the consent calendar as listed?
Okay, I make a motion to adopt the consent calendar as listed.
We have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Oral communications, all right, oral communications, is there anyone that wishes to speak on items not on tonight's agenda? Ah, Anya, okay, no problem.
Good evening, Commissioners, Anya Miller. You have my statement also in writing, I hope.
Yes.
But because I'm responding to an oral comment at your last meeting by Mr. Scharman, I felt that I should give it orally as well. He made the statement at the April 28th meeting.
Right, and respectfully, you have 15 solid minutes.
[laughing].
Or less.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I think, I won't, I'd say, in my view, looking back at history is always a good idea. I should say that because I'm the oldest surviving council members in Brisbane.
Good job.
Know that? Old lady. In this instance, however, of the statement of Mr. Scharman, it really shows, the history shows how arguments that were relevant in 2008, eight years ago, are vastly different today. This is especially true with reference to climate change and the economics of solar installations. You all know how much lower the prices of PV panels are today than eight years ago, about 80 percent lower, in fact, and that there's a business profit to be made of them, with them. Secondly, it's my recollection from meeting, Ms. Dohscharman reported with PG&E procurement, that official said they had no experience or plans back in 2008 to develop any solar plants themselves. They would just buy the required renewables from distant solar and wind generators in the Central Valley and beyond. The implication was that they would get more profit from the transmission required for those transmissions. Later, I remember the city manager being told by PG&E that they were not interested in any demonstration solar facilities, and that's what they considered the proposal for the Baylands to be. As to the Sun Edison bankruptcy that Mr. Scharman mentioned, according to the financial press, the cause was not the solar market, but gross financial overreach by that management of the company. Bloomberg News, just last month, on April 21st, wrote, quote, "The bankruptcy says more about Sun Edison's relentless pursuit of growth than the solar industry as a whole," end quote. Moreover, today, with the community choice Public Power District starting in our whole county this fall, and a new emphasis on, quote, "distributed generation," which is locally-generated renewable energy, whether homes or farms, there's a new immediate market, including all of Brisbane, and new major funding prospects. There have been great advances in federal and state policies supporting renewable development as well as brownfield cleanup. Solar and wind renewable energy generation is globally a major growth industry. Power from solar farms is expected to grow from 100 gigawatts in last year to 450 gigawatts in 2025. Our Baylands could be a great contributor to that goal, global. Finally, Mr. Scharman implied that the solar farm in the Baylands, if built, would have to pay for the Geneva Extension. Actually, after the landfill is closed, the constructed solar farm would not be dependent on either the Geneva Extension or the Candlestick Interchange. The solar farm can be easily accessed with a minor northerly extension of Sierra Point Parkway. That's the extent of my comment, and I appreciate your attention and taking account of the realities rather than what you're always told. Thank you.
Thank you, Anya.
You still have 10 more minutes, huh?
Don't encourage. That was very succinct.
[inaudible].
That was perfect. Perfect. No, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishes to speak on items not on tonight's agenda? No? Okay, great. Written communications, let's see, we've got three postcards, one is from the Project Information Center here in Brisbane, some events in June. We also have one from the MTC on participating in the 2040 strategic update, and we also have one from three agencies all moving under one roof, from the MTC, Bay Area Quality Management District, MTC itself, and the Association of Bay Area Governments. So, they're all moving to Beale Street in San Francisco. And we have two letters, one from Dana Dilworth and one from Anya Miller, which you just heard from, so, thank you.
We also have this 5,000 Marina Boulevard.
Oh, is this, said for information only, was that?
Yeah.
Pardon, am I right? Okay, great.
Part of the record.
And, yes, and we have another, and a letter from, oh, right, regarding 5,000 Marina Boulevard, review SR 3-16. Okay, great. All right, so, I think that's everything, so now for business, tonight's business, the Baylands Planning Application, GP-01-06, and related final EIR with Universal Paragon as the owner, with various other owners and parcel numbers, and tonight we're discussing the intensity of land uses within the Baylands.
And I'll turn the presentation over to Lloyd Zola.
Great, thank you, Lloyd. Come on down.
[inaudible].
Right, come on up.
So, tonight, there's an awful lot to go through, and we structured this to make it as easy as possible to talk about land use and development intensity, so we'll talk, you know, there'll be a lot. The question for this evening is, what is the appropriate intensity of use of future development within the Baylands? We've talked about previously a lot of different things, and now we'll focus on how much. You talked about, you know, I'll go through that in a second. My general reminder that we've given at each meeting is that the direction you give tonight is preliminary, and everything that we'll talk about tonight, or you'll talk about in direction you give, is subject to reconsideration when you're giving a final recommendation, taking final action. So, the things that you've talked about, we started with basic principles for Baylands development, you talked about land uses that may be appropriate and land uses that would not be appropriate within the Baylands, we talked about the key features to be preserved and how they organize land uses into six basic areas on site, and potential development, planning and development needs to fit in those six areas around those features, and I'll show the maps that we've gone through. And then you talked about, in each of those six areas, what your land use vision was, and I'll walk through each. So, this is the map of the key features we talked about, existing land uses, the roundhouse, various environmental protection features, the Geneva Extension, Candlestick, Caltrain, where Lagoon Road ends up, orientation towards transit, and open space connectivity through the whole site, that was one of the first basic principles, a large, unbroken block of open space that provides flow through the site. And as we then looked at those features, you really have six potential development areas, and this is consistent, these six general areas for all of the scenarios, for the renewable energy alternative, they're all built around these same six areas, basically north or east and west of Caltrain, north of Geneva, between Geneva and Visitation Creek, and south of Visitation Creek. And I'll walk you through each of the areas with the direction as we understood it. So, you looked at Area 1, the area north of Geneva, east of Caltrain, basically the existing recology facility, and then your direction was to look at light industrial between recology and the Geneva Extension, which would allow for the expansion if that were to happen, and also have a land use there if the expansion did not happen. Your direction on the area just south of that, the northern half of the former landfill, was to emphasize renewable energy generation, and part of the discussion was, there may be some potential for some R&amp;D or other compatible development type within a solar field, and we'll talk about a couple different options there. Area 3, the southerly part of the landfill, south of the creek, open space, recreation, potential for commercial recreation. In the industrial way area, you talked about light industrial, basically the same types of uses that are there, but improving the buildings and getting more modern buildings, but maintaining the same kind of use in that area. In the area south of the Geneva Extension around the roundhouse, restoring the roundhouse, creating a, the roundhouse as a community function and having it as a premier part of the site, and then also R&amp;D surrounding, and then the last area, Area 6, the northwestern portion of the site. Go ahead.
So, R&amp;D is research and development?
Research and development. We looked at, as we talked about the planning, this was what you had identified, we looked at like Genentech as the prototype of what research and development would be.
Is that what we discussed? I don't, okay.
Okay, and basically, it's a office-based use that has some assembly, some manufacturing, scientific research from the outside, if you can picture the Genentech campus, it looks like an office building, but there will be, as part of it, some internal assembly, manufacturing, but otherwise might be industrial uses, as they're creating prototypes, and so it's around, basically a scientific tech-based type setup.
Is, is that what everybody remembers us deciding on?
All my notes said R&amp;D, so.
So, I thought, I thought we also wanted commercial offices. Did we discuss that as well?
Well, my memory is that we did, we were open to R&amp;D and a tech campus in that area. We did also talk about hotels and trade commercial.
Yeah, trade commercial as well, and, and also for number five as well.
Right, and what we'll do tonight is we'll walk back through each of these areas, as we set density, and we can talk about the primary use and other uses that would fit, because one of the things with an area this size is, you don't really want any of these large blocks with one and only one use. You know, a giant office building, you're going to need retail, restaurants, and those kinds of things to fit.
You're just pointing out the primary use that we discussed, right?
Primary use.
The alternatives should be in there in the review.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Based on, on the discussions you had, it was April 28th, and then everything leading up to that, you know, all your discussions to date, the public hearings, as well as Kaiser Marston's presentations, we actually put a group of planners together, and we had a ton of fun with your recommendations, and it really was, was interesting, being able to work with them, but taking the recommendations and all the work that you, as a commission, have done to date, and creating, one, an open space and trails framework, to look at land use intensity and what that means for the site, and then to look at some circulation ideas, all based on what you've discussed to date, and when, tonight we'll present what that might look like, and because the difficulty that you will find, or the difficulty we always find as planners, dealing in development intensity, is how much is the right amount, because there's, there's a lot of variables, how much room do the buildings take up, how is parking handled, how tall are buildings, what is the character we want to come out, and so, our planning team actually came up with, based on your direction and Kaiser Marston's comment about large tech campuses, as, as a idea of how to make the site different than Sierra Point, so we looked at taking each of these areas as blocks, rather than having a series of streets dividing them into small blocks, and so.
Nice.
It will help you with, with density and intensity questions. So, as we looked at the six areas we had talked about before, like I said, you let a bunch of planners loose, we do, have all sorts of fun, but one of the things we talked about was the desirability of a Bayview park, basically putting a linear park along the freeway, and with the extension of Sierra Point Parkway going north, based on the Dangerman Plan and based on the CPP scenario, Lagoon Road comes into a traffic circle, because that's the only way you can manage an intersection that close to the freeway, and in talking to the Public Works Director, that road cannot meet Geneva close to the freeway, so it has to push west.
To come in.
To move that intersection, so rather than having it hug the freeway like it does now, since we have a traffic circle, we can move, the idea was move Sierra Point Parkway to the west and create a park along the bay shore, somewhere around, I think, 400 to 600 feet, which is also consistent with some of the discussion you heard earlier about pushing development farther west, getting it away from the bay shore, and so the idea is, create that park. We looked at areas, what we had called previously Areas 5 and 6.
So, the green areas, the park you're thinking of?
Open space and park, yeah. So, if you look at, at this graphic, the area from the freeway, west to the First Street, would be park, and that also makes for, in extending the Bay Trail north, instead of having the Bay Trail sitting in, essentially next to the right of way of Sierra Point Parkway, it gives, the idea would be a 400 to 600-foot park for the Bay Trail to run through.
So, how much, big of an area is that, all told?
All I did was a total acreage on, on open space, so.
Okay.
I can figure that out, because we have some scale, so I can, I can give you that. I didn't look at that area.
So, width is sufficient for now?
Yeah. It's a fairly substantial area. Just looking at this, recognizing that Area 3 is about 66 acres, we're probably half of that, so you're about a 30-acre park.
And number 2 would be left with how many acres?
That one, I have a calculation, I'll be able to give you all of those, I don't have it in.
All right, this is very interesting.
The other thing we looked at was Areas 5 and 6, the northwesterly areas in and around the roundhouse, and then that area in the far northwest part of the site, and part of the realization we had in looking at those two, is the transit orientation is really focused on Geneva and on the Bay Shore Station, with the potential, as we've talked about internally, getting the Bay Shore Station, Caltrain to move to Geneva, that makes, at least from Brisbane's standpoint, a very logical location for the Bay Shore Station, because you have a major traffic route, you will have bus rapid transit on Geneva, and having the Caltrain Station in the same location as a major BRT stop, and then you've got all the folks who live up in Daly City and the southern part of San Francisco, who are all trying to get on the 101 freeway on Bay Shore, by creating parking at this station, actually, they could get to the Bay Shore Station in their normal way and take Caltrain into, into the city, rather than driving as they are now. So, there's an argument to be made for that as a location, but even if Caltrain, Bay Shore Station stays where it is, or a couple hundred feet south, the area immediately around the roundhouse has a different character, more commercial in feel than, than office, to make it more of an activity area, and we'll show you some, some concepts of that. So, one of the suggestions, we look at Areas 5 and 6 with a slightly different configuration. We also looked at the area south of Ice House Hill that we've never really talked about before, so you have the machinery and equipment building, which is not a part, but then there's also, in all of the scenarios, there's either open space or, you know, charter school or something else there. The idea we had was looking at that as an area, and we'll make some suggestions of what that might be. So, we've identified that as an area, we've all talked about, you know, the need for buffers adjacent to the tank farm, and so we looked at that in relation to the routing of Tunnel Avenue, and looking at some of the earlier open space plans, and then looking at the other three areas that we added, were basically areas between tunnel and the rail, that are really more rail-oriented, so, we basically took the six areas we had and added the machinery and equipment area, so we can talk about that, buffers around Area 8, which would be the tank farm, and then areas right on the rail at the station.
Area 7's not owned by the applicant, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But as you write, you know, as we create a general, there's part of it that's not owned by the applicant, which is the machinery and equipment building, there is land adjacent to it, and so if the objective is to identify, here is land use for the Baylands, so that's why we added a couple of these areas.
Okay.
We're not saying, change the machinery and equipment building, although there's some potential future uses, we're not saying change the tank farm, just recognizing that they're there, and that's the reason for adding that area.
It would be very good if you can put two slides side by side. Do you have that?
I wish I could, yeah. In looking at this, I'll walk you through it, really, Area 1 stays the same, Area 2 stays, Area 2 is basically what it shows here is Area 2, before it had, in addition, the park that sits east of it, same with Area 3, Area 4 is the same, Area 5 before was the entire area south of Geneva, and Area 6 stays the same.
Do you have updated sizes on, like, Areas 2 and 5?
I'll be able to get that, yeah, have that there, yeah. Okay, so, this was our way of conceptualizing how land uses differ between different areas.
Also, can you, ma'am?
Yeah.
Explain what these color schemes are, so that it becomes a little bit more, because you're red, purple, yellow.
Yeah, I'll go through that, yeah, and, and you'll see, as, as we get to the, one, the purple is industrial-type uses.
Okay.
Industrial parking, the light blue is, Area 2 is energy generation, the green is open space, the red is more commercial in nature, and, I don't know what color to call it.
Yellow.
But, yeah, the, the, the yellowish, Area 6 is transit-oriented development, and I'll show you, we'll go through each one. We looked at, and I've, I've learned this, you never set a bunch of planners loose on anything without saying, here are your objectives that you must come back with. The objectives that we looked at were things that you have laid out through your hearings and through your discussions. One, large connected open space network, restoring the roundhouse as a prominent site amenity and community amenity, maximizing transit orientation, world-class model for sustainability, comes out of, really, the sustainability framework, large-scale campus setting came out of the discussion with Kaiser Marston, and then recognizing existing uses again from your direction. So, this is what we used as, as a basis for laying out what I'm about to show. Before I get into the individual sites, one of the things, we'll talk a little bit about how you measure development intensity.
Can I ask you one question?
Sure.
All of these areas we identified, we didn't show any place where we, I guess we also talked about the wind turbines and wind energy, generated energy, we sort of put that aside, so, where would that be?
Okay. Wind energy can be handled in a number of different ways. Wind energy can be integrated on buildings, so Arizona State University is doing a lot of integrating wind turbines and wind generation on buildings, they're doing a number of experiments, some really interesting concepts that they're coming up with, so, as opposed to things that just look like propellers on tops of buildings, they're turning some of them, and some of the wind energy on tops of buildings into almost works of art, some look like birds, some look like airplanes, they're experimenting with other concepts on buildings, one of the dynamics of wind on buildings is it will tend to whip around the side of a building, so they're actually creating cylinders at building corners, that as the wind turn, comes around a building, will turn a, a vertical turbine, and so the wind energy can be mounted, basically, anywhere in the site, as opposed to laying out specific areas. As you have in the renewable energy alternative, if a large solar field, we're calling it, in this case, renewable energy generation, which could include both photovoltaic, any other kind of solar energy, wind can be put anywhere, really, on the site. Then we'll also suggest, when we get to it, ways of incorporating solar energy and potentially wind energy into the buildings, it need not be exclusive to say, we have a solar farm, and then we have buildings and parking areas, you can actually use the buildings as solar fields.
Okay.
Okay. Just, we'll talk a little bit about how you measure development intensity. Dispose of the easy one, you'll hear the term development density, density is a measure of residential uses, units per acre, and you, fairly common. When we get into non-residential uses, that's where you hear, hear the term development intensity, and in terms of general plan level, specific plan level, you have really two different ways of expressing how much building on an area, development intensity. One, you can say, within the entirety of the Baylands, within individual sub-areas, this many square feet is the maximum, whether it's 1 million, 5 million, 10 million, whatever. The other measurement that planners tend to use is floor area ratio, which is simply a measure of comparison of building area to site area. So, floor area ratio works like this, so if you hear that term, basically, a floor area ratio of 1 means the building square footage equals site square footage, so in this example, at the top, you've got 60,000 square feet of building on a 60,000-square-foot lot takes up, one story takes up the entire area, floor area ratio of 1. If you use half the lot, half a 60,000-square-foot lot, 60,000 square feet of building is two stories, and if you use a quarter of the lot, it's four. In your general plan now, there are floor area ratios that sit there, describe, for individual sites, this is the maximum floor area ratio, and this is how it's, how that's measured. So, to get to floor area ratio, or get to the building area from any site, if there are 40,000, 40,000 square feet or 400,000 square feet of site area, floor area ratio of 1 is 400,000 square feet of building area, it's just multiply square footage of a site times the floor area ratio. It's just multiply square footage of a site times the floor area ratio.
Also, you'll multiply for every story, right? The floor area of each story.
Yeah, you're counting all the building, all the square footage in the building.
Then you'll multiply that by 10, each area of each story times 10.
Yeah, no, so let's take the example of top right. So we have a 60,000 square foot building that is four stories high. There are 15,000 square feet of floor area on each of the four floors. 60,000 square feet on a 60,000 square foot site is a floor area ratio of one.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah. Yes, it's, if four floors, 15,000 square feet.
Each, then it will.
Each, right. Okay.
Because sometimes there's confusion, people just say, look at the footprint of the building. That's not the case here.
Right. Because the difference is, there's also the term lot coverage. So lot coverage is a measure of what is the ground floor size. When we're talking about floor area ratio, it's every floor in the building. Okay. Now, as you express development intensity for the Baylands, your two alternatives, basically, you could say a maximum building area for the entirety of the Baylands. The Baylands may have no more than X number of square feet. Or you could say that each area of the Baylands, Area One, Two, so on, so many square feet for each area. And then the total for the Bayland just becomes the sum of those individual areas. Or within individual areas, you can talk about floor area ratios. For me, as a planner, when I go look at a city's general plan, the easiest thing for me to figure out is when it says, in this area, there's this many square feet permitted that I can go to. In this case, it would be a specific plan for development regulations. But really, your choice how you want to.
Yeah, the other aspect of that is for each building block, you can have a separate floor area ratio also, right? Like for each project, for example, Google wants to build that R and D, then that will be specific to that, that floor ratio will be for that project.
Yeah, so what you could do.
There are two different things here. One is the overall versus the.
Right, so you could say, within one area, the overall floor area ratio, whatever part of the site, is one for the entire area. However, we would allow a portion of that site, or in site-specific development, to go up to two. The difficulty with, and then it would allow more intense, less intense uses within an area, the best.
But it will make it very difficult, though, if you're going to make it one as an overall for the whole area. It will be a nightmare for the planner to figure it out because one area may take the entire, you know, allowance, whatever was allowed for that.
I.
So what will happen to the rest of the projects?
And here, it becomes incumbent on how you approve projects, and you look at site-specific development. But basically, any specific plan I've seen that has that kind of, here is for an individual area, basically, it would say that within a block of land, you are entitled to, let's say, a million square feet. First project comes in proposing 500,000 square feet, simple math, there's 500,000 square feet left. And you will find sometimes, a developer of an area will say, what I want to build is a much more intensive development. I want to use that entire million in a smaller area, more intense, taller buildings. It then becomes incumbent on the city reviewing it, rather than saying, oh gee, Mr. Developer, you know, what are you going to do with the rest? Your conditions of approval at that case for the smaller site-specific development say, if you're going to concentrate the overall amount of development for an area into a smaller space, then you shall design the balance as usable open space. So you don't get people coming back. But large-scale projects go through that kind of concentration development all the time, it's fairly common. As opposed to trying to outguess every individual block that might be there. That becomes for the planners more of a nightmare. Because you always have control over the site-specific approvals anyhow.
What is the far of a corporate campus, like the Apple mothership or the Facebook headquarters?
Facebook is about a, not, I'm thinking of Google campus. The Google campus is about 80 acres, 3 million square feet, so if I remember right, that's about two and a half to three. And then you get to the Google campus, or the Apple campus, which is on, it's one big circular building on a very large area, is actually fairly low in terms of its floor area ratio. You look at the Microsoft campus up in Everett, or whichever city it is up there, it's very high density. It's really intense, tall buildings. So the issue is, is not so much the intensity of the campuses as how many square feet do they have? So Google is sitting with about 3 million square feet. Microsoft at about 8 million square feet. Apple, I believe, is about 4 million, 4 to 5 million. And depending on what they want their campus to look like and feel like, they will have higher or lower intensities. But generally, the campuses are anywhere from 1 to 3 million plus. Genentech, I think some of their, they've got multiple campuses, and some of them are somewhere around a million and up. Okay. As we looked at the open space concept that you have talked about, we laid out an open space framework to work within that includes the Lagoon and adjacent habitat, Ice House Hill, the Visitation Creek corridor, the Bay Shore, Bayview Park, active open space in Area Three. And then the concept potentially of looking at community gardens, that was one of the things that came up in some of the public hearings, that it'd be nice to have a place for community gardens, urban farming. And one of the areas that we had thought might be amenable to that is the area down south of Ice House Hill, in that open space area surrounding the machinery and equipment building, potentially also even a site for a nursery. Because that was one of the other questions about a permanent space for the nursery. The other thing we looked at were the trails, the continuation of the Bay Trail all the way up, a trail through the center of Areas Two and Three, to, you know, with that, within that big mass, depending on what the uses are, trail along Visitation Creek, and trails leading to Ice House Hill.
Where were you thinking of putting the firehouse?
The firehouse is really, could be located in any of these areas.
I see.
It needs to be, basically, the fire agency authority needs to decide where they would put that. It would be logical for them to have it in the Baylands, but the authority also needs to look at their entire service area and how they get access to everything. So they may or may not ultimately choose the Baylands. What we have done in the EIR, and one of the requirements of the specific plan, is to design the area so it meets the response standards of North County Fire Authority in terms of shorter buildings and engine companies, and then with taller buildings, ladder companies.
Also, it depends upon the railroad crossings, too.
Yeah, because they look at the time of access from station, actually, from the time they get a call to the time that they are at a site unloading, and.
There has to be a great separation, otherwise, if it's at grid, there is a train there, they cannot go through.
Oh, yeah. We've seen that in communities where half the city doesn't have fire police when a train is coming through. Especially where you have some of the long freight.
Yeah, this one also uses Union Pacific Railroad, so sometimes they do have very long trains.
And ultimately, the decision of where the fire station goes is for the county fire authority. We have laid out and basically said that development within the site must meet the standards of the fire authority. So that's how you can be assured that they get the idea. So the idea of the Bay Shore, Bayview Park, a place for the trail, recreation, other, you know, as a setting for other uses within the Baylands, restoring the creek goes back to the CPP scenario, the Dangerman Open Space Plan, as a wildlife habitat corridor, hiking and bike, hiking and biking corridor, the possibility of community gardens in and around, the machinery and equipment building, potentially that is a place for a native plant nursery. And then if that building would ever become available in the future, because that use can obviously stay, it could become, you know, used as a community center for gardening-type activities and other activities. The idea of pushing Lagoon Road north creates a larger nature preserve, creating a nature walk, and creating a better buffer between future uses and at the north end of the lagoon. So we took that framework, and then based on that layout of 10 areas, and your discussions laid out potential land uses, looked at development intensity, and when I'm done with this, actually, we created a computer model of land uses and development intensity to figure out what building heights correspond over what areas to what level of development. So let me run through each of the areas, and then we can show you what that modeling looks like. Area One, basically, you've talked about as being the recology facility, allowing for light industrial, about a million, just over a million square feet accounts for the recology expansion. So if you call this a million square feet, that would provide more than enough area for use, whether recology expands or not. If recology doesn't expand, you'll see a lot less square footage out there. Renewable energy generation area. The idea here was to look at maximizing energy generation, and basically, we have an 85-acre area in Area Two. That would be, in the way you laid out, direction of renewable energy generation, basically, it could be a solar farm, as you see in the renewable energy generation scenario. Again, setting planners loose, they start thinking. But one of the things that we looked at is with the suggestion that we have large campus, a campus setting, and a tech campus, when you look particularly down farther south on the peninsula, the big companies have all wanted to be on the water, overlooking water. And this is, you know, the area of Bayview. So one of the things that we looked at as an option would be a potential tech campus within this area. But the idea is that renewable energy generation can be a solar farm, basically ground-mounted over a large area. It can be building-mounted solar, as you see in the bottom right, which is the Google campus. All of those buildings are equipped with solar across the roofs.
So then the solar would be providing energy to the R and D.
To the campus.
But also for us, there would be enough solar?
That would have to be measured, because one of the other things that can be done is to utilize the parking lots as covering them with solar fields.
Uh-huh.
And we often miss that opportunity of looking at parking lots as solar. When you go to, you're starting to see this a lot in Las Vegas and Nevada, Arizona now, because it's so hot in the summer. They'll actually use solar fields to create, or solar panels to create shading in parking lots.
So how do you work it out that the solar would actually be given to other areas than the commercial, the R and D?
Okay, so what you'd want, the way that it would work, or the way that it would typically work, is the solar that's created on the building is, in this case, sold to PG&E to meet their portfolio requirements of purchasing renewable energy supply, and then they supply electricity back, if there's a net use at any length of time. So the buildings would use their solar energy first, if there was more energy being created, essentially the meter spinning backwards. And just like having solar on your house, if you're generating more than you're using, meter spinning backwards, PG&E pays you the difference. If at night, you're net-using, then your meter's spinning forward, and it's reconciled.
Well, I think one of the things that I'm getting from the Crevel group is they wanted to have enough solar generation to supply at least Brisbane. So this is a question, I think, that needs to be explored.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're looking at this, then, you know, we need to somehow figure that out.
And that's a policy recommendation? Yeah, that if, it's basically your policy recommendation, how you want to go, and how extensive you want to see generation of renewable sources. But if you would look at.
If you do that, then your idea of having the solar panels on top of the building will not work, depending on what kind of total amount we like to generate.
Yeah.
You know, because the idea here was to generate enough for Brisbane, not only Brisbane, but the surrounding areas, to be part of the San Maturo County Initiative that we have. With the concept that you have is okay for, you know, the other areas where you will have the R and D facilities, like Four and Five, you can use this concept, but for the solar farm, I don't know whether this will be appropriate.
No, and ultimately, it's your recommendation, so we're just presenting an alternative, because the concept we thought of is, in the Bay Area, the big campuses and the tech companies are choosing waterfront locations. If your policy recommendation is that the generation of electricity or renewable energy within the site should cover more than the site and supply all of Brisbane, then the campus, you know, that doesn't fit. If your recommendation is that the Baylands be essentially energy-neutral or produce in excess, without specifying how much over a large area, then this could be considered. So we just wanted to lay out the alternatives for you.
I mean, all right.
Yeah. And.
Also, if you want to use this kind of concept, is there any, there might be another possibility that we can switch the area, where if you have an R and D near the transit-oriented, we can make that as a solar farm, and the other one, that could be another alternative. If there is a concern that we need the ocean view.
The one caveat I'd give to that, you know, the other thing to think about is this sustainability framework, and one of the things you've talked about is maximizing transit orientation. So loading the quadrants around, you know, when you really push the solar fields north, that's, you know, towards San Francisco, towards the Bay Shore Station, just think of the consistency of where the fields fit and trade-offs between issues. So this is just a concept we wanted to throw in, because we have seen in the Bay Area that those tech campuses tend to want to be on the water. The other idea, and we asked them to draw a design, so we know what we're talking about to get into square footage, is you see here clusters of four buildings. You could say, what we would want to do is we would go for just a cluster of four buildings at Geneva, so essentially, one-third of the site, leaving two-thirds for a traditional solar farm, two-thirds, just leaving options for you, is it. So in this case, two- and four-story buildings could yield about, in this configuration, up to 1.3 million square feet, at a floor ratio of about 0.35, pretty low. What you see on the west. What you see on the west side, to the left, that look like surface parking are actually parking structures with solar fields on top. So just a concept for you.
Wait, wait, wait. Okay, so the left, just want to make sure I have my right and left, I have problems with that.
Hey, you see the buildings down, down this-
So the buildings are the ones with the little crosses in them?
Yeah.
Okay, and the solar farms, the, okay.
Is to the left, and, yeah, with the, with the vertical lines, those are actually parking structures whose tops would be a solar field.
Okay.
So you can, by using building and structure, generate a substantial amount of energy generation, but there's also an offset with energy consumption. So this would be clearly net generation of energy, but not what it would be as simply a solar field, taking, using no energy.
Interesting concept.
As we look at the active recreation area, that on the southerly part of the Baylands, southerly part of the landfill, area three could be used for commercial recreation, active recreation, about 66 acres worth, that's substantial size. Along Industrial Way, which is about 28 acres, the idea is the same kinds of uses, but more modern buildings and buildings that meet code. So, and in looking at development intensity, meet modern code, but the idea is, in terms of development intensity, maintaining about the same square footage that's already there, is, I think, what the suggestion we would make. When we get into the Roundhouse area, and this is where we have the most fun, because, one, the Roundhouse is a really nifty building, or could be, and then some of the things that had been talked about were restoring railroad use and making a railroad theme. So, as I said, you set planners loose, and they can do some interesting things. The idea is, the Roundhouse building up at the northwest in the circle, constructing some other buildings to basically make the circle clear. And what that does is create a plaza in between those buildings of a little bit more than an acre, which is fairly substantial size. We can also, and you'll see kind of the gray, small buildings, you know, down along the creek. One of the things that could be done, and I haven't seen this at AT&T Park, but I have seen in Las Vegas, what's called Container City, and what they did was actually take railroad containers and weld them together and make buildings out of them, and so there's actually restaurants with that very railroad-type theme. You could also do that, it was popular for a while, taking boxcars and turning them into restaurants, offices. And so the idea here, with that long line of buildings leading to the center of the plaza, is actually, people talked about having rail coming up and utilizing that rail for uses, restaurants, small shops, that would be boxcar-type structures, or actually real boxcars, or real containers. Like I said, planners can have a whole lot of fun doing things. But we have seen that kind of use done, and that matches the kind of themes that have been there, and the buildings, and actually, you can bring rail in that way and have a usable rail.
Is it almost near Napa where they have some of that? Does anyone remember?
Wine train, you mean?
Uh, those kinds of buildings.
No, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's close to-
Well, there are, there are, there's boxcars, I've seen some, and if you drive on Highway 80, there's one near Fairfield or-
Fairfield, yeah, that's right.
So the idea is, you can, you can do that kind of thing, and then to the east, as you get towards Caltrain up at Geneva, some taller buildings, but the idea is to create activity shops in a place, yeah, I could, this is really ambitious, but the kinds of uses I can see, the kind of mix of uses you see, for example, at the Ferry Building, with small shops, restaurants, you're not going to have anywhere near as much space. But the idea is to get that kind of use and that kind of activity, you need to have people there.
Mm-hmm.
And so by looking at the density of transit-oriented development, getting people on-site can make that a much more viable kind of, kind of area. Restoring the Roundhouse, you can get the railroad exhibits, and we've kind of figured a way of using shops and combining it with actual rail, with a railway, a railroad theme. Lazari Fuel Building, actually restoring that, kind of an interesting-shaped building, and you can picture a lot of, kind of fun uses in there, office uses, retail. The first image I had of what that could be, again, being really ambitious, was a smaller version of Quincy Market next to Fannie O'Hall.
Yeah.
Which is just a series of small restaurant stalls. But to make those things happen, there has to be people there and create some density of use. Then we looked at the transit-oriented development areas and looked at, what you see at the top is the area, Geneva running there, the Caltrain line, so that's the most northwesterly portion of the site, area six. You see, to the right, the area south of Geneva, just west of Caltrain. And we looked at, how much building can you really fit on there in a sensible way? But with a combination of buildings to the north, three to five stories in height, structured parking, and not having a fine-grained, you know, series of streets running through, you can actually, between these two areas and looking at two to three area stories south of Geneva, structured parking, getting about 3.6 million square feet of building in there, in a way that is lower buildings, create around a courtyard, and more of a single campus, even if it's multi-tenant, than a series of individual buildings on individual lots. So, and where this is really leading to is looking at, we believe that, that between these two areas, a floor ratio of about 1.2, 3.6 million can start, square feet, can start creating that intensity of use and get people onto the site. In a way, I think one of the questions you had is, how does the Baylands end up any different than Sierra Point? And if you remember Kaiser Mars and Tim Kelly's suggestions, was look more at large campus settings as opposed to individual buildings. And so this is just a concept of what it can look like, trying to figure out how much square footage you might actually get out of some of these areas. As I mentioned earlier, other areas of the Baylands, what we call Area Seven, in and around, the machinery and equipment building, just calling that open space, it could be used for community gardens and native plant nursery, and at this point, potential future, the existing use in that building stays and could become part of a community use in the future. In the tank farm area, the idea here is, it's an industrial use, it stays, show that as industrial, so that use is coming in and around, know what's there. The idea-
Industrial park?
No, I wouldn't call it a park.
No, I'm, (laughing), it's a tank farm.
Yeah, it's, it's a tank farm.
Yeah.
But the idea is, and in looking at the Dangerman Open Space Plan dating back even before the community plan and the CPP scenarios, push Tunnel East to create, and you'll notice here, Tunnel is, is the grayish area moving, you know, going north-south. You see Area Eight, that's the tank farm.
So which way is east?
East is to the right. I shouldn't point, because-
Okay.
My right is your, your left. But Area Eight, east is, east is to the right. So as you see, right now, Tunnel, or, yeah, Tunnel actually runs right on the boundary of the tank farm.
Mm-hmm.
And the suggestion, going back to that Dangerman Open Space Plan that carried forward into the CPP scenario, was realign Tunnel a little bit farther east, so you can create a buffer and gets, you know, some greater setback between the road and the tank farm. And so that's, that's what this is showing. This alignment basically follows that Dangerman Open Space Plan.
So how much further over would Tunnel be?
I think it's about 100 feet, 50 to 100 feet, not far, because you don't want to take it too far east and start, you know, cutting into the landfill, but a little bit farther east, following that, that plan. Then as we look at, at Area Nine, this is, in, in the plan, you know, when we looked at this previously, this is part of Area Two, but the area between Tunnel and the rail line is really a little bit different, it's narrow. That is location for the lumberyard relocation, potentially if, location for Caltrain parking, even south of Geneva, and definitely Caltrain parking north of Geneva, into what we'd call Area Ten.
So this is how many square acres, do you have a clue?
Of which one?
Number nine.
Area Nine is about 10 acres. One of the things about the Baylands is what looks really small on big maps, is actually pretty big when you- But that's, Area Nine is enough room to fit the lumberyard and then parking for Caltrain. So the other thing we did, and I'll, I have to go back to the staff desk to demonstrate this, and then we'll turn it back to you. We did a land use and intensity model, so we took these concepts and actually used a program called SketchUp to create a model using Google Earth and the grading plan that was done to show what those amounts of square feet or square footage of buildings look like. This is the area that was modeled, and I can show you that, and then we should hand, the other thing we did is create a handout for you of some of those slides that we did.
Oh, that's helpful.
Yeah, and then what we'll do at the end is actually go through each of the 10 areas we laid out, some land use choices. You see some boxes on the left that say here, uses, so, okay. So I'll take you on a, kind of a tour of what those square footage figures we talked about look like. You're also being handed a copy of the PowerPoint for reference as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, good.
So, let's get to, let me start over here. There we go. Okay, so what you see here is a computer model of everything that we've just talked about, and that site plan that we showed you of individual areas. So here we are, looking north over the Baylands, we are probably somewhere towards the south end of the lagoon, looking down. And I can focus in at any point, if you want me to. This is basically the same concept, looking at the Baylands, and for purposes of modeling the buildings, you will see on the northern part of the landfill, we modeled that tech campus that may or may not actually be there, and we did not attempt to model recology. If we focus in on that northern, northwestern area, you see the transit-oriented buildings on the curving road is Geneva, on the north side of Geneva, transit-oriented buildings to the south side of Geneva, retail-oriented buildings along Geneva, and then the Roundhouse to the left. And then we'll focus in a little bit. So as you will see, we made a very simplistic Lazari Fuel Building and just stacked up logs. But the idea here, you can see, filling in the Roundhouse circle, and what you see at the center, the concept would be actually bringing, if we could get one, a locomotive into that site to use as an exhibit at the center of the Roundhouse, and then those boxcar-type buildings coming down to the bottom left of this. So as we focus down a little bit lower, you can see more of that train concept.
So-
Yeah.
So one thing that the people working on the Roundhouse and the train is that they wanted to reestablish some actual railroads track.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is that somewhere that, I mean, it looks like you're putting actual buildings on top of what would-
Nope. No, the idea is the buildings coming down, so you see, in the center is representation, that could be actually a locomotive, the dark area you see coming down to what looked like buildings would be track, and what you see is the two buildings towards the center of the map at the bottom, we talked about the idea of using boxcars as buildings. That's what, that's what that's a represent-
So the track would be just from the, where would the track be?
The track is running, oh, I can show, I got this. This would be the locomotive right here, if you can see the, the red thing, track runs right there.
Through the-
Boxcar?
Yeah, the boxcars would actually be on the track.
Yeah.
So they could actually move?
They could be moved if you had to.
Okay.
You could do that as static, if you really wanted something where you would move trains in or out on a, on a regular basis, you would not put these boxcars here as buildings.
Okay.
Or as, as uses. But I think, you know, as, as we laid this out, the idea was whether you could get funding for that more regular use of rail, but even if you couldn't, this is a way of recreating as close to a rail use as, as we could get.
Uh-huh.
For more of a ground view, you see one-story buildings and, and that kind of, kind of setup. This line right here would be the actual rail. Okay. Now, if we look at, at the northwest area, this would be one of the campus areas, which is Geneva right here, Bay Shore, and this is the bridge over Caltrain. So the idea is, rather than having a series of streets running through here, the idea would be to locate buildings on the outside, structured parking on the inside, and that's what starts yielding between this area and the south side of Geneva, about 3.6 million square feet of building, with buildings that are three, these buildings are three to five stories, as opposed to much taller buildings.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The idea, we talked about the active recreation area that would sit down in this location, this would be the traffic circle leading to this interchange, Lagoon coming in this way, this is Sierra Point Parkway, and then the extension of Sierra Point Parkway, pushing it 400 to 600 feet, as opposed to coming right back, running along the freeway. So this, it would be that Bay Shore Park, or Bayview Park. When we look at, and spent most time in looking at the idea of, this is the tech campus that could also be, you know, if you wanted a renewable energy field, the idea of this, or one possibility is, these are coming in groups of four, so the recommendation of the commission could be, yes, the tech park is something we would like to see, about 1.3 million square feet, no, we want a large energy field, renewable energy generation field, either covering the entirety of this site, in which case, there would be no tech park, or another possibility would be to say, we would look at maybe a 400,000 square-foot park sitting up on Geneva, with this area, two-thirds of that area to the south, being a renewable energy field. Just giving you options as to how to look at that area. When we look at that area, we had thought, conceived it in two- and four-story buildings, but this also demonstrates, you know, shows a, a concept that could be included elsewhere, with a combination of green roofs, as well as solar fields, parking structures being covered with, with solar energy, this could occur throughout the site, or even where you have buildings, we may show these a little bit too far apart, but where you have large buildings relatively close to each other, again, planners imagining things, to connect the green- Again, planners imagining things to connect the green roofs on buildings into a linear park across whole areas. This is just a, a concept of when we talk about a tech park, what it could be, if, if that's something you'd be interested in exploring. This is showing the baylands in, in context of, of the community. And one of the things we tried to do was get an idea of what these three to five-story buildings might look like. There was a lot of question about what would it look like from the bay? And whereas we can't do photo simulations trying to get out on the bay and take pictures, this kind of computer modeling can take views from the bay. So we're a couple hundred feet out on the bay from the shore, looking at, on the left, two to four-story buildings that would be on the landfill. On the right, what you see are three to five-story buildings that would be on the far side of the, um, far side of the Caltrain line. So as you get farther away, out on, out on the water, um, the buildings, you know, really do not come up above the, um, the ridge line. We looked at views from the, uh, from the north or from the southeast. This is actually at, I can, couldn't remember the address. We actually looked, took a view. It turns out this is 525 Humboldt. So Google Earth, we just picked a spot, went down to, um, the ground level and then looked at Google Earth, what have we picked? And this is 525 Humboldt. But showing from higher up, farther back in Brisbane, what you would see with this lower development style. And then, um, I think we got the Madhouse here. I keep wanting to call it the Mad Hatter. But going straight up Visitation, looking out, you see the, the hill at, at Candlestick Point and very low development, um, at, you know, with three to five-story buildings laying out on the site. And then another overall view. I can zoom in to any of these or swing them around. But what we wanted to do and the reason for putting this together is to give you a, an idea of a simulation of square footage on the site and what it might look like.
Okay, I have a question. I think there was supposed to be a water treatment plant, is that correct? Where are you thinking that would go?
There's a couple of options in talking to the Public Works Director. One would be in, in this area. So, um, west side of tunnel, um, just north of Visitation Creek. From an operational standpoint, uh, Public Works would like minimizing the amount of pipeline to connect to Bay Shore. Another area would be down off of Bay Shore. I think that's probably less desirable area from visual standpoint, but it's, it's one of the harder areas to access, you know, in and around the machinery and equipment building. But ultimately, the location, the water treatment plant, which is really a recycled water facility-
Right.
-is, is going to end up being an engineering decision on where can it fit. But by the time it's designed, um, it will not look like a big industrial pipes all around the outside.
What about the water tank?
Okay. Water tanks, the idea of water tanks, and this is one of the discussions that we had early on with Public Works Department. And that is, there is not adequate storage capacity existing within Brisbane for water storage for this area. And so, um, and as the EIR says, Public Works before, um, any development would occur on the baylands would have to site a new location for a tank. I believe it's about 1 million gallon storage. And that would require, one, locating it at sufficient height. Generally, you want them about a hundred feet above the, um, ground floor area, ground floor level of the baylands. And they would need to site that location and that would be a separate environmental review once the site is actually located.
So they have no clue at, I mean, they're not talking about it at this point?
It will not be onsite. And the reason it would not be onsite and, and that is-
It wouldn't be on Ice House Hill?
No.
No, it'd have to be somewhere else.
No, the only, yeah. The EIR identifies that the only area on the site where you get sufficient elevation to build a tank is Ice House Hill.
Right.
And you aren't going to put a tank on top of Ice House Hill. So that's why it would have to be located at a separate location and it would, but it will not be onsite.
So looking at this map itself, it's going to be a set, quite a, quite a long way from the site itself to get, to get that kind of gradient.
Yeah.
So it has to be on somebody else's property, you know?
Exactly. And the city would need to site that. But the way that, that the city system is designed is a water tank and the water storage would not be for the exclusive use of any specific area. So it all gets tied together into, um, an integrated system. So there would not be a set of, this tank is for the exclusive use of the baylands and these pipes supplying water from that tank are only for the baylands.
Did we take that into account when we did the fiscal analysis as to how much the cost will be for siding of the water tank and also bringing all the piping to the site plus the treatment plant?
Yep. The cost of, the capital costs of building, acquiring the land for the tank, building the tank, building off all the off-site water lines and constructing the onsite water recycling facility, all those capital costs are borne by the applicant. So all the capital costs are not city costs.
How much that will be? Did we calculate that?
That was not calculated, but it's, it's, it is part of and must be part of the applicant's pro forma for their site because-
So that's more than 1.1 billion dollars where we talked-
It's included in that, in, in that figure.
So 1.1 billion dollars include this, uh, water tank?
Yeah, it would be water tank, water facilities, uh, sewer lines, drainage, because you, you're going to have to build a, separate stormwater from sewer to send sewage for treatment in San Francisco.
The problem is we have not even located the tanks, so how can we calculate the cost? We don't even know the site, where it's going to go, so.
There's some basic, basic parameters of, of doing that. You know, land in, in Brisbane is going for this amount. But the issue on, on the infrastructure cost borne by the applicant, uh, that is not necessarily, not really the city's to say it's going to cost you this much. It's going to cost you X million dollars, whatever it is, because what Public Works says to the applicant is that tank in place, meeting our standards and all the pipe, the water treatment facility, recycled water facility, all of that will cost us nothing, us city of Brisbane, you bear that cost.
Well, it has to go underneath the Bay Shore and underneath the railroad.
And that's all part of that infrastructure plan. That's how you, that's how you get up to 1.1 billion.
I think it's going to be a lot more than that.
Okay. Anything, any other things you want to look at in terms of, of buildings, what they look like or what building heights look like at different locations?
Another thing is that probably, I was just thinking that this recreation for, um, area could probably have a lot of solar on the areas for the, um, parking lots. So if they're going to have a recreation area, they're probably going to have plenty of parking.
Yeah. So you would have parking areas, uh, you can-
And that could probably go towards the city because, you know, part of it would be-
Yeah.
Would be so many buildings, it'd be more just-
Right, because if you were generating-
I'm just trying to figure this out.
Yeah, if you were generating solar energy within that open space area, there's no concurrent, there's a little bit of building use if you had a, a, a recreation building there. If you had any facilities like tennis courts or basketball courts, any night lighting, there'd be some electric use. But yeah, you could integrate solar either into all the parking areas. If, we laid out in, in that design earlier, sixty six, it's a 66 acre area, recreation over the entire 66 acres. Again, that could be designed so that you had an active recreation area over half of that recre, half of that open space area. So the size of solar energy generation could occur in any of these open spaces.
So I, I see only four areas where there would be solar.
Actually, the solar can be in any of the buildings, every single building.
Yeah, this is just conceptual, but if you're talking about-
I'm, I'm just trying to figure out the idea of, of being able, if we're thinking about turning this into, um, the solar area, you know, I would want to be able to supply Brisbane with solar. I mean, that seems to be something that the city has been wanting. And I think it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and we can identify areas where you could get, let's run through all the areas where you could get renewable energy generation.
Right.
One would be, and this is area three, that would be some combination of open space, active recreation. You could use some of this area or if you wanted all of that area, if you did not include active recreation for renewable energy generation.
But then that would take away from the, the open space area.
That's your policy recommend-
I mean, we, we have a certain, we have, uh, the city has asked us to reserve a certain amount for open space.
Yeah.
That doesn't quite make sense.
We've talked about area two and, and the renewable energy generation alternative. This is a large ground mounted solar field with wind generation. This is another area that, that would be generating, um, solar energy, whether building mounted, parking mounted on buildings, which would not generate a huge net. If you had a solar field that would be generating substantial net, um, energy over and above any use on the site, which would be next to nothing. Recology and their expansion has a major generation of renewables from theirs.
But, but that would stay with recology?
No, that would also, that could also be, when you say stay with recology, the way-
Well, they were plan from, well, I have gone to some of their meetings.
Yeah. Is if they designed this site and, and designed their renewable on the site so that they were generating more energy than they are using, then they aren't keeping all of it. That's, I think, I think what you're getting is net generation. So generating more electricity than is being used. And in some of the concepts we had seen with recology, they actually would generate more energy than they would be consuming onsite.
I thought they were going to try to use it for their vehicles.
They would use, uh, yeah, they would use it for their vehicles, but even then they could generate, it's still, it's an amazing amount that they could generate. The other idea of solar energy generation, although this is not, this would be more energy neutral with maybe some small surplus would be building and parking mounted in a solar in, uses on the west side. So really the, the-
Maybe we could get the tank part, put some solar on it.
Put solar on top of the tanks? Probably don't want to heat up tops of the tanks.
As a matter of fact, probably not.
Probably not. But the idea would be, as, as, as we focus on, on recommendations, would be, um, and I'll just, I'll just throw out options, that recommendation that either this be entirely a, um, ground mounted solar and then have building and parking lot mounted solar elsewhere. Some level of development, you know, particularly around, along Geneva, um, with, you know, the building and, and parking lot mounted or, you know, some level of development in here. But really your choice as to how you want to go.
We, we can also think about the future, but when we can have a solar cells on the, on the roads itself.
Yeah.
You can drive over the solar.
One of the things, and I'll tell you, one of the things that-
Can you imagine how much, how much energy we'll generate?
Well, that blacktop. But you, you laugh about that. And one of the things that's being actually investigated in, I think it's Australia, is you know, we see the, the big signs that go over the, over the freeway with the big pole that comes up and over and across. They've actually designed those so you have the signs in both directions. In the center is something that looks like an egg beater. And it's a wind turbine. So they've actually creating, I mean, some really odd configuration.
And that's from the, the cars going through, creating-
No, no, in windy areas. Or integrating, um, solar into buildings on the corners. And if, if you're ever in, I guess it's Tempe, that, it's that campus, Arizona State's making a major investment in not only building mounted solar, but also wind, building mounted wind.
And you can also have the solar from the tides, hide in low tides when they come in.
Some really, yeah, that's, I think a little bit-
That's been, that's been done and, and-
Yeah.
I just saw it the other day on the TV. I think it's in Norway or some Scandinavian country.
In this case, I think, you know, in terms of the recommendation, we'll be looking at the idea of building mounted, uh, and, and if you wanted a, a policy that said, that goes beyond just, the site should be essentially energy neutral as opposed to create, generate net energy for the community.
Yeah.
So those are the, that's kind of the layout of what, in, in this case, we also gave you a table. The, the, the buildings you saw in these configurations is about, um, 6.3 million square feet, a million of which is, is recology. So this is a total of about 5 million square feet of building other than recology. If you went a couple stories higher by comparison, that would give you something closer to the community, the CPP scenarios. CPP scenarios, I think, are somewhere up around 2 million square feet more, which would be adding probably two stories to each of the, one or two stories to each of the buildings. I just want to put that in, in perspective to the scenarios that you've seen.
Lloyd, would you mind going to the Candlestick Point rec area? I was just curious to look, looking from that point over to area six and, and, and one.
This what you were, yeah. And, and right here, what you see, the, the mountains obviously don't end that way, but our model did. These are, because they're farther back and they're located slightly lower, uh, these are three to five-story buildings on the, the far side of the, um, of, of the rail line. These are four-story buildings that are closer up.
Okay, those are four, okay.
Yeah. And so what you can see, if you picture, uh, a six-story building, it's going to be up about halfway, just the view. But the idea that we wanted to make sure of is that out from Candlestick Point, that was one of the questions that had been asked before, is how low these buildings are. The idea also is if there would be a tech campus on that area, was pushing it west away from the, the shore. So you get a, you get a pretty nice park and from the standpoint of some of the comments we've heard earlier, less impact out on the, out on the bay.
For the windsurfers.
Time for break.
I was going to say, can we have a break today?
Break? Yes.
Yep, and then from here, it's all yours.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we'll take a five minute? Five minute break?